Testing.
Good afternoon. We're going to call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Hollister City Council on September 17th, 2024. The meeting is now called to order. It is 4:00 PM. City Clerk, could you please call roll?
Councilmember Perez.
Present.
Vice Mayor Resendez.
Here.
Councilmember Morales.
Here.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
And Mayor Casey.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Burns, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Attorney, could you please report any actions from closed session, September 3rd?
There was nothing to report, Mayor and Council.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on to special orders of the day. First, we'll have a proclamation for National Recovery Month. So declaring September 2024 as National Recovery Month, whereas substance abuse treatment facilities in San Benito County are an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas they are committed to ensuring a safe, clean, structured recovery environment and are dedicated to providing supportive and affordable sober living, and whereas saluting people who are in recovery from alcohol and drug use disorders, as well as those who have helped them attain a treatment, helps to overcome barriers by educating the community about the benefits of treatment and affirming the goal that all people with alcohol and drug use disorders should have access to treatment services. And whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and Sun Street Centers invite all residents of San Benito County to participate in National Recovery Month. Now therefore, I am Mayor Casey, Mayor of Hollister. Do you hereby declare September 24th as National Recovery Month in the City of Hollister? Thank you. Do you want to say something, please?
So I personally, I'm the Director of Sun Street Centers Women's Residential. My name is Latisha Peck. I personally don't want to say something, but I want my clients who have chosen to say something about where they've been, what Sun Street Centers has done for them, and where they like, would like to go with their lives.
Hi, my name is Madison McCullough. I came from San Luis Obispo County, and I've been at Sun Street for a little over 90 days. I came from being pregnant, using, living in my car, and had no hope for my future or my son's future. And when I got to Sun Street, it gave me a safe place to be, a house, to make a home, and to, I want to thank all the staff and all the women, because every day I learn something new and grow every day, and it gave me hope that my son doesn't have to ever see me use again.
My name is Anisha Torres, and before coming to Sun Street, I was just going down the wrong path, and I really struggled with addiction, and I was afraid to ask my family and my friends for help, so it ended me up on the streets, and I was just doing bad, and I had no idea what to do with my life anymore. Like, everything had become unmanageable. And I turned to Sun Street, and Latisha actually really helped me. And, you know, I, I was, I'm so sorry, I'm so nervous. But, yeah, I've learned to actually open up more, and it's just helped so much. Coming into the program and being around women with all different backgrounds, but our recovery brings us together, and, I'm so sorry. But I'm trying not to cry. But it's really changed my life, and it really turned my life around, and I just, there's a lot of things that I want to do with my life now and before. I found it unmanageable, and I was unable to do those things, and Sun Street has really helped me, and I really appreciate all the staff and the women. Thank you.
All right. And now we have a special recognition of Police Captain Rosie Batano as one of the Latino Coalition of San Benito County's 2024 Visionary Women Honorees. Captain Batano. Hi there. So I'm going to just give this to you and say congratulations, and I'm going to let Mickey Luna say a few words.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Mickey Solodia Luna. I am the President of the Latino Coalition of San Benito County. We've been around for 37 years, and every year we pay tribute to women, we pay tribute to veterans, to men, to our youth. Unfortunately, because your meeting is so early, our youth and college students could not get here in time, because they wanted, they wanted to speak about the role model in Hollister with Captain Rosie Batano, that they see themselves in her. And I think that that is such an honor to have somebody as a role model in this community, in this city, actually being there for young people to follow through on a career that is actually to, for the safety of this community. So with that, I just wanted to say that a long time ago, as an employee of the City of Hollister, I was in finance for 30 years, and I remember the recruitment that went out, and that recruitment, we, as employees often said, "We want to see more Latinas. We want to see women of color here in the City of Hollister." And so they had the recruitment, and Rosie knows it very well, because we used to call her La Rosie. And so when she got hired, it was a celebration at City Hall. It was a celebration of women. It was a celebration of employees that said, "Finally, somebody, you know, did the right thing and hired this woman, young woman," because she was flaquita, little, and you know why? But you know what? We treat her, I personally treat her almost like a daughter. Mary, who is Vice President of Latino Coalition, we feel very, very close to her. And we just want to say to the City Council, "Thank you. Thank you for placing honor on her as, as much as we did that luncheon, where there was 109 women paying tribute to her." So I'm thinking, Rosie, you know, you're the best of the best, and, and we're just so happy that young people and young women are seeing themselves in you. So keep going, because, you know, it's just, like Cesar Chavez said to me one day, "You know what, Mickey? You'll never know who's behind you. You never know who's following your steps. You'll never know that, and you never turn around and look back. You look forward, because somebody, someday, is going to fill your shoes." Thank you, Rosie. Thank you, City Council.
I know you have a speech prepared, Rosie, so.
Yes, I do not.
It won't take that long. I just, I'm, I am so glad that other members of our community see what we see every day with Rosie working at the Police Department. She's been here since 2001, a long time. I, I was here when, when she was hired, and were just as excited as you are, Mickey, with her being here. In that time, she's, she's done basically almost everything, with the exception of riding a motorcycle. I don't think you wanted to do that, right? She's been a field training officer, a senior officer, patrol sergeant, detective sergeant. She's been in charge of the DUI management team. She's been a TASER instructor. She's been a defensive tactics instructor. She's been a field training coordinator, so she was in charge of the trainers in our department, and she's been a school resource coordinator. She was also the first woman lieutenant for the Hollister Police Department, and now the first captain, female captain, for the Hollister Police Department. We are very proud of her, everything that she's done for, for our agency and our department and our city and our community. So thank you for recognizing her, Mickey, and your Latino Coalition, and thank you for the city for doing the same.
I don't want to ride a bike ever, by the way. Thank you, Mayor, City Council Members, for this recognition. It means a lot. I appreciate it. Special thanks to Mickey Luna and San Benito County Latino Coalition. That luncheon was amazing and very inspiring. So I encourage next year for all of you guys to attend as well. Chief, thank you for the opportunities, and thank you to the city as well. Thank you.
I'd like to, I don't know if you guys noticed, did you see that big old crowd over here? It's like, that's awesome. You guys are changing our community. Thank you so much.
All right. Before we do public comment, I just want to make a brief statement to remind everyone about the manner and decorum of our meetings. Meetings must be in an orderly and efficient manner without willful disruption, so that the business of the city can be conducted. When the council, while the council is more than willing to listen to comments from the public, it has to be done at the appropriate time, and should be done up at the podium with a microphone, so that your words can be heard and recorded properly as part of the meeting. There cannot be interruptions when council members are speaking, or audience members calling names, chanting, or yelling out. If you do so, a warning will be issued, and if behavior continues, you might be asked to leave chambers. If we have too much disruption, depending on severity, it might be necessary to call a recess, clear chambers, or cancel the meeting. So I would like to ask for your courtesy and cooperation in this regard, so it won't be necessary to take any of those actions. Thank you. All right. So we're going to go move on to public input. This is the time for anyone in the audience to speak on any item not on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speaker cards are available in the lobby, and are to be completed and given to the City Clerk before speaking. When the City Clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, state your name and city for the records, and speak to City Council. If you're joining us via Zoom, please click on the bottom of your screen to raise your hand. If you're joining via Zoom using a cellphone, you need to press star nine. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, with a maximum of 30 minutes per subject. Please note, state law prohibits the City Council from discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda. City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Mayor Casey, we do not have any public comments.
Okay. So we're going to move on to our consent agenda. Do any members of the council have brief questions or comments on items from the consent? Anyone? No? All right. City Clerk, do we have any public comment on consent agenda items?
Yes, Mayor Casey, we have one speaker, Susan Biskborne, I think is what it is.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Susan Biskborne. I'm representing Cat Crew, California, and also the other animal rescues in Hollister. We've had a problem with getting our SNP bus paid for. Apparently, the funds are there, but it has not been paid for, and I just wanted to give you some of the, I wanted to tell you what the impact of this is. In August, we did not have a clinic because of some miscommunication. In September, because it hadn't been paid for, we had no clinic. Cat Crew had 26 requests for help with cats, most of them in the city.
I'm sorry. I don't see this item on the agenda.
This has.
It'd probably be during public comment.
It has to do with Dr. Jeff funding, helping us with, with funding for fixing animals.
So it's Dr. Jeff's contract, is what you were talking, please finish, it's fine.
I think, I think it will fit right into that. We have, we have a feral clinic tomorrow. We switched that from pets, and this, in regard to Dr. Jeff coming in to help hopefully donate his time to fix animals. We have taken in 43 kittens, mostly from the city, into our fosters. We have trapped 54 cats that will be fixed tomorrow, between tomorrow and at the vet. This is costing us approximately $6,000 of our hard work, or what we worked hard for in donations to come up with, and I think this city in, in hoping, hoping to get Dr. Jeff in here also can alleviate some of, of this problem that the rescues are having. This is, you can see what the needs are in the city, and without the SNP funding, that's a little off Dr. Jeff, but we, we have a problem, and we don't see him be able, we aren't able to resolve that. But we will have 40 cats SNP tomorrow, and 20 are going to the vet, paid for by, by Cat Crew donors.
Thank you very much. City Manager, you wanted to comment on this, because I think we have an update about SNP bus.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to, to comment if, and the City Attorney said it's okay. The payment that they are referring to was for clinics in August that they, or clinics in July, that they billed for prior to the event, and then are stating that they are, we are late in paying them, when they are billing them outside of the terms of their contract. They're to bill after the event, and we have 30 days to then pay. The invoicing requires certain things on them, on it. In communicating with them, their billing specialist was not available. They have since turned in some invoices and are working with Animal Control to get them in a manner that adheres to the contract. So although it is being stated that, that we are late in our payment, the contractor needs to bill in adherence with the terms of the contract, not bill prior to the service and expect payment the day after. So that is one of the challenges we're facing, and I've been in communication with the CEO.
I think, yeah, you talked to her, and it's, you know, moved forward. Okay. Then let's, are there any items that council members wish to pull from consent? Yes.
So not to pull any items, I just wanted to make a comment on the, on the cards. I just wanted to thank our chief, Chief Reynoso, for reaching out to the supermarkets and the vendors that will, that this ordinance will impact, or this code will impact. I just wanted to say thank you very much. I really appreciate you and all of your staff for reaching out. Thank you.
So if we don't have any items to pull, can I get a motion to approve the consent?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries 5-0. So we're going to move to council business. Item 8.1, a resolution to adopt the City Council's strategic goals and objectives. Could we have a staff report?
Yeah, Paul's bringing up the presentation right now. Great. Thank you, Paul. Okay, so this presentation is on the fiscal year 2425 strategic goals and objectives. And so as a way of background, on April 22nd, the City Council held a goal-setting workshop that was facilitated by Dr. Sean Spano. At that workshop, or prior to that workshop, he conducted interviews with each member of the council, as well as each department head, to get their perspective, input regarding the priorities and direction for the city in the upcoming fiscal year. As you may know, during that time is when a lot of the, the fine tuning and the development of the budget occurs, so the, the timing of that was, was germane to the budget process. So following that thoughtful discussion and deliberation, the City Council at the table here in front of us reached a consensus on several strategic goals, and then outlined objectives through the discussion that would help attain those strategic goals. And the goals reflect the city's commitment to fostering a prosperous, safe, and engaged community, while ensuring fiscal responsibility and sustainable growth. So the following proposed goals and objectives, in no particular order, there wasn't an order ranked throughout the, throughout the meeting, will guide the city's activities and resource allocation throughout fiscal year 2040, 2024, excuse me, and 25, and were considered in conjunction with the development of the 2425 budget. So the first item was infrastructure, and as part of infrastructure, as part of the resolution, it states that the City of Hollister will identify and plan for strategic infrastructure improvements, replacements, and maintenance, including water and sewer, roads and transit, and broadband and information technology. So that's the strategic goal. The objectives that were discussed of how to get there, implement the city roadway paving plan, which is underway now. Many of the projects have, many projects have been engineered and are now shovel-ready, allowing staff to seek out alternative funding options. So as you know, we were working with Congresswoman Lofgren's office, and having engineered plans that were already complete has positioned us to make asks for additional state and federal funding. Partner with the state to the widening of the Highway 25 project. Evaluate the current state of water and sewer infrastructure to prioritize projects, including budgeting for the equipment slash resources needed to investigate pipes. We've since procured and received the sewer camera truck that we spoke about around that same time at council. Address aging infrastructure beneath the roadways, and this kind of builds upon the last one, including the old water and sewer pipes, especially in the downtown area. So as you've seen, some of the projects that are going on right now, it will be addressing some of those infrastructure items as well. Addressing wastewater odors, maintaining existing infrastructure as funding permits, pursue enhancements to broadband and IT infrastructure by implementing the Acela software, and seeking grant funding opportunities for broadband, and then partnering with the state, county, and federal governments to explore the widening of Fourth Street Bridge, including pedestrian access. So those were the objectives that were discussed around the table for infrastructure. The next item is budgeting finances and economic development, and under that, the City of Hollister will continue to ensure financial stability and economic growth by carefully monitoring expenditures, increasing revenue generation, and supporting and strengthening economic development. So the objectives discussed in April that helped guide the budget development process were continuing to monitor city expenditures, improving transparency, and increasing trust through published budget book, pursuing economic development activities to bring in new revenue sources, such as tourism, innovative businesses, and activity at the airport, prioritizing the revitalization of the downtown area, including attracting new businesses and supporting the businesses that are already here, and including small businesses. There was a point to be made for keeping, ensuring that the small business community is healthy as well. Capitalizing on the city's airport to support economic development activities and opportunities. I think we all realize that the airport brings quite a bit of opportunity, especially through the, through the fence access, which is very unique, and a very unique opportunity for us to capitalize on. And to simplify the city processes for public and businesses, where the city provides oversight, such as code enforcement, planning, building, making the city processes and review faster and more user-friendly, providing regular economic forecasting to anticipate fluctuations in the economy, which we'll get to through our quarterly reporting, understand the true cost of providing fire services and animal control services to San Benito County and San Juan Batista. So just to clarify, and animal control services, that is to San Benito County only, and to adjust contracts as needed to ensure the city recovers costs in accordance with the city's fiscal and budget policies. Quality of life and public safety, so this is broken out over two slides. Proactive steps to improve the quality of life of our kids in the community. Build a larger community center in the city to help provide a location for more programs for youth, seniors, and families. Promoting jobs for youth through nonprofit organizations and local businesses. Expanding youth programs by partnering with arts and other creative organizations. Maintaining our current city parks, green spaces, look at a green space program for downtown, such as a Pocket Park Program, and the beautification of the city through landscaping, power washing sideways, sidewalks, and renovating the Pauline Valdivia Memorial Community Center. This being continued, some more of the objectives were to support sustainability and environmental resiliency initiatives, increasing public art in the community, supporting community events to maintain the small-town feel, and continue to invest in technology to support staff, including the camera work in the parks, as well as the flock system. Continue efforts to recruit and retain public safety staff. Continue studying, studying the feasibility of a city-operated dispatch slash communication center for emergency services, as well as enhancing the city's ability to assist the community in times of disaster. And finally, the last, the last strategic goal was community engagement, education, and transparency. The City of Hollister will develop and enhance community engagement activities and tools to facilitate open communication, education, and transparency with the public. And so through those, the objectives to help achieve that strategic goal would be engage the community in multiple formats, social media, newsletters, updating the city website to make it more engaging and user-friendly, town hall-type meetings, the broadcasting of council meetings on, on television via CMAP, and outreach components for ordinances. Recognizing the importance of community input on their interests and needs, the consideration of an annual survey to the community to get their feedback, as well as supporting community engagement and transparency through providing open data, such as crime data and statistics. Make public engagement more accessible and fun, and having a clear and consistent voice for messaging, which goes through City Manager's office or designees, to ensure we all are, have a similar voice and are consistent in our messaging. And finally, looking at an app for city services where residents can request assistance with a city service or report issues they may see around town. So many of these have actually, a handful have already been implemented so far, especially like on the last one, we've launched our website, which does have a component in there. It's not an app at this time, but that is something that we're, we're looking at once we get some feedback as, as we continue with the rollout. And so recommended action this evening is to adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year 2425 strategic goals and objectives. With those goals and objectives, that will tie back to how we bring items forward. With those goals and objectives, that will tie back to how we bring items forward. We will tie our agenda items back to how they help meet these goals. And also on the agenda item request form that Jennifer, our clerk, had mentioned at the last meeting, that would be tied to it as well. So we, our recommended action is to adopt the resolution, and we are open for questions.
Okay, do we have any questions from council? I guess Councilmember Morales.
Thank you so much, City Manager. I think I was, in reviewing, it sounded like a lot of this were the brainstorming note sessions from the, from the meeting, but I was wondering if we can put this into a more like a work plan, identifying like the, what's the short-term, intermediate, and long-term potential for implementation? Some of the recommendations may not even be possible at all. And so to be able to identify that, and then the projected timeline for when these projects might be completed, or if this is like a three-year potential based on whether they're doable, whether we have the money, or whether they fit within the existing work plan that's already been identified this fiscal year by City Council. And also the dollar amount attached to some of these items. Because if something's going to cost like $5 million, for example, that might, might just be put aside for now, or maybe we might say we're going to need to reduce some other areas or deprioritize other areas in order to move forward with this item. So before we approve this, this is something that would, at least for me, be essential to kind of make sure that this is a priority, especially if requests are going to be tied to this document.
Councilmember Burns's question.
Thank you. Also, I would, I would suggest that when it's done, I support what Councilmember Morales suggested, but when it's done, I'd like to see it become a published document that's available on the website as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions, or do we have a public comment on this item?
There are no public comments for this item.
Okay, bringing it back, do we have any further questions or comments? I, yeah, please, go ahead.
So not knowing what the will of the council is, I've heard Councilmember Morales say that before we formalize something like this, she would like to see that, and I would certainly support that, makes good sense to me. So what's the best way to do that? Because if it were to go for a vote right now, I would be inclined to vote no, but I really don't want to. So should we just continue this to a further date? Or what's the most practical way to get there, assuming the majority of the council feels the same?
Well, I think one approach you could take is if the goals are the goals of the council, it may, it's the objectives that are the, the more time-consuming, the more cost prohibitive, or, so that could be something that if the goals are approved, then we could come back with a plan on the objectives.
Got you, thank you.
I would support that. I'd like to see the goals adopted, but I think, yeah, we could probably do some more work on the objectives. And also, I just wanted to comment on the website because I've been perusing it, and thank you, thank you, because there's a lot of nice features in there, especially when residents have questions or need help with something, there's that little form they can fill out, and it gets routed in, so it's, that's very helpful, and I'm looking forward to all the different things that you're, you know, adding in. So thank you for all that hard work.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
So I don't agree with my colleagues here, because I don't think that the original intention was to do all of the specifics you're asking. We said when this was first adopted that we should have done this a while ago. We're, what, two months away from an election? So you're essentially asking our staff to do more work, to do, which is going to cost us more time, that was, this was never discussed in the original resolution, and you potentially won't be here to see that work done. We're going to have a new council, we're going to have new objectives, and we're going to give our staff more work on top of that. So my concern is, number one, when we first asked for this, we said it was just to come up with the strategic goals. Right? This was never discussed. Number two, we have an election coming, you potentially will not be here, and then you're going to waste all of the staff's time, energy on this new project when they have other projects that they need to work on as well. So if this is something that you would like to see done, my suggestion would be to revisit this after the election, so that we don't waste the staff's time and our resources. Thank you.
Councilmember Morales, comments?
Yes, I would love to approve the goals, and then later on, come back with the recommendations in a different format, but I definitely would, whenever we're ready, make a motion to approve the goals today.
And I would definitely support that.
All right, do we have any other, so we have a, are you making a motion then to approve the goals and bring the other back, or what?
So I'll make a motion to approve the goals of the strategic plan, and for the brainstorming session to come back as task or objectives with the additional items as discussed, for a time-certain meeting for prioritization, and some type of a preliminary analysis on potential funding, and also time allocation, based on what we've already have in, in the attached document that's in section... Whatever that section is.
Eight point one?
Eight point one.
So I'll second that, and then I would just say that the time certain should be right after the election in November.
No. I'd say if, if an agenda item is put, we have two council meetings, I think it's appropriate to bring it back based on our normal timeframes.
Okay, so that was my friendly suggestion.
And that was my no.
Oh, sorry, my friendly amendment, so you're saying no to my friendly amendment. Second. All right, thank you.
So do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, all those opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries four to one. All right, we're going to move on to informational reports, committee assignments, any ad hoc or standing committees that do have a report to make? Councilmember Morales, do you have anything?
Yes, Councilmember Burns and I had our cannabis meeting, and thank you to staff for putting that together, our assistant city manager. We look forward to, it was a meeting with the cannibal, cannabis owners, sorry, very different. And we look forward to the, the concept design of those future meetings, and looking forward to the conversations, so thank you for that.
All right, Councilmember Burns, anything?
Okay, only meeting to report is, last Friday, we had our COG workshop for the Highway 25 project. We had Caltrans District Five folks there, Caltrans District Four, and also VTA reps were there, talking about the work that they've been doing to present, they reviewed 23 different alternative options for the Highway 25 plan, and they presented seven of those to us for consideration, and I think it'll be discussed again at our COG meeting this week. But after that, it'll probably go into the public review period where, where the public will have a chance to look at those seven options and give comments on, on the different ones. And then from that point, once we have a selected option, then it would move into the EIR environmental process. So that's kind of where we're at with that, so. And also, I forgot to mention, Bob Tiffany, who is one of our former supervisors, is on the transportation, California Transportation Committee Commission, and he was there and actually gave a talk as well about the process and, and how it's moving along. And I, that's all I have to report on that right now. Do we have council reports on other items, anything? Oh, I'm sorry, did you want to report out on that as well?
Yes, I'm gonna, so what is recommended for mobility partnership? We had a lot of discussion on many of the projects, so I'm gonna, what is recommended from VTA and mobility partnership is for residents to subscribe to a project webpage, so I'm going to give that out right now. It's www.vta.org/sr25, and you'll be subscribed to two different project sites. One is the Santa Teresa Extension, and the other one is for Highway 25. And every project or every update that happens will be sent out to our community. They're also doing a lot of community outreach, so they're working with, they'll be working with San Benito County, but most of the outreach is being done right now in South County, Gilroy and Morgan Hill, because that's where the, the Santa Teresa project is headed. But anyone that commutes north should be aware and should subscribe. And then you'll see everything that's happened with the projects, the timelines, the, all the VTA projects, and it's plenty, so I would highly recommend people go to the website for, for up-to-date updates. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any reports from council on anything else? Yes?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you. So on Friday, the day after the farmer's market, I was notified by a constituent, a young girl, I would call her, that she was handing out flyers at the farmer's market. Councilmember Rick Perez was there yelling at her and the people that she was giving the flyers to. He was using his status as, "I'm a council member, she's lying, you guys need to listen to me." And I asked her two things, "Did you feel intimidated? Did you feel uncomfortable?" And she said, "Yes." Said, "Okay." And then on Saturday, I'm canvassing in my district, and I had another constituent tell me that she was also there getting a flyer from this woman who has been yelled at by him. She felt very intimidated, uncomfortable as well, and I asked her, "Okay, thank you for telling me, I'm going to ask you the same things." And she answered, "Yes." She felt intimidated, uncomfortable by getting yelled at. There's cameras down there. This council member has admitted, by his own admission, to be arrested 79 times. We know he's currently living in a house with a registered sex offender.
Okay, I think we're getting off topic here. We're supposed to be giving a report out, so I'm calling it to order.
And I have, and I have, I know you don't want me to speak about it, but I have every right to speak about it. This council has not looked into his criminal record. There are state laws that preclude you from even sitting up here as a council member. I know that you support him, Madam Mayor, and I know that you would not look into his record last time.
I'm sorry, this is, we're getting, is he an attorney? Did we not already cover this? I mean, it's been brought up at least half a dozen times.
No, what I'm asking is for this council...
I'm sorry, point of order, just a moment.
To check to see if the council member legally has the right to even be on the council.
I'm waiting to hear from the city.
I know you don't want to look into it.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute recess until the council member can control himself.
That's fine, you can take a five-minute recess. But you have an obligation to see if the council member should even be up here legally, or if he's violating California laws. Even though you refused to look into it last time, Madam Mayor. And I know you have a sign in front of your house for him, and he's got some, for you and this council member in the house that's registered to a sex offender on Megan's law. Thank you. So the one thing that I would like for this council to consider doing is to check into the conviction, felony convictions of the council member to see if he has the legal right to sit up here as a city council member. And on top of that, the council member just said we can pull up the camera footage. So I would like for you to pull up the camera footage as well, to consider pulling up the camera footage. So two things. Number one, on a future agenda item, does this council member with his felony convictions have the right to sit up here? And number two, check the cameras to see exactly what happened over the weekend, or over on Thursday at farmer's market, to see if it is aligned with the two stories that I just told you. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Burns, did you wanna go next?
Thank you, Mayor. So, to begin with, I would like to have our city attorney monitor what I understand is a current case that's going on in the city of Salinas that deals with administrative fines being levied prior to an administrative hearing. And my understanding is a property owner that levied $30,000 in fines didn't have the ability to pay them, and their process would be similar to our process, where you have to pay the money to have a hearing. And so, I don't know where that's headed, I've read about it, the comments were, there was a threat of litigation, and so recognizing that our process is similar, I would ask that our city attorney follow that to see what, if anything, comes of it, and if the city has any exposure or risk, and if we need to consider changing the process. So, my second request is of this council to consider creating a disability advisory committee. During recent weeks in one of my neighborhoods, I spoke with a gentleman who actually led to my request for consideration at the last council meeting for crosswalk or crosswalks at Clearview and Hillcrest, and he is in a wheelchair that's motorized, and he has some challenges navigating through the city, and most of his travel is in that wheelchair. And so, I know in other places where I've worked, it's a pretty standard committee or subcommittee, and I think, I think it would be appropriate to have one here as we continue to evolve. And so, that's my second request. And then my third question of the city attorney is, as it relates to Councilmember Resendiz and his questions about somebody serving on a city council that has been convicted of a felony, I thought those questions were already asked and answered. And so, if they have been, can we, can we get some input?
Yeah, I'll go back and look. I, I thought I had a recollection of that, but I need to check, and I'll let everyone know.
Finally, and then finally, I would ask that the council consider doing a violation of the code of conduct for Councilmember Resendiz and his demeanor, moving that forward as well. And so, thank you, Mayor, those are my questions.
Point of order.
Thank you.
What, what is your point of order, sir?
I'm confused about this new request. You're asking for me to be censured again? And if so, what is the code of ethics conduct that you're claiming I violated, if that's your request?
So, so my request is not that you be censured again, but that an investigation be conducted in relation to the current code of conduct and your conduct, sir. Thank you.
All right, so we're, you're talking about a disciplinary hearing, not a censure. Okay.
Correct.
Thank you for the clarification. Councilmember Perez, do you have anything?
I'm good tonight.
Okay, Councilmember Morales?
Yes, it was my recollection that we had already addressed all those questions, and so, if addressed, I wouldn't like to continue having the same conversation. So I am in support of creating the disability committee, and I am in support of Councilmember Burns' hearing on the violation of the code of conduct for Mr. Resendiz. It's the new code of conduct, not the old one, and also for, for investigation on the utilization or using this council as a vehicle to create videos and social media propaganda for the utilization to, to use on political campaigns. So that, in addition to Councilmember Burns' request, I would like that also to be investigated, please.
I just had a couple of things following on. I would support the disability committee. Also, I did wanna mention one thing that I am aware of, having tabled at the farmer's market, there is a problem with people who hand out flyers. It is not allowed, so that is just something to take in mind. I also support a disciplinary hearing, not just for the disparaging remarks or conduct towards another council member, but also for not following the rules of order and not adhering to the chair when called to order. Let's see, I did have one other item. I had a request from a woman who has a mother who is 101 years old, asking if there could be some kind of recognition, and I know, we don't have a formal program, but I'd like to get the council's consent to just, you know, recognize her, maybe do, do some kind of a certificate or something and recognize her, if they wanted to have her come in, so. And I think that's, that's it.
Okay, so we had a request to look into felony convictions and how that would affect a council member's eligibility to serve. I think I've heard that to have the city attorney look into it with an assumption that there may have, that may have already happened, so, city attorney, I think I'm seeing consensus to, to look at that matter. I had a request for the farmer's market video, and looking at that as well.
Mayor, I have a question, if I may.
Yes, please.
So, so Councilmember Resendiz has made some pretty aggressive allegations, and so I'm wondering if the code of conduct is really the way to go. I'd like to, I'd like to see what the chief of police thoughts are on that. I'm not trying, I'm not trying to pull the city into the politics, but I, I don't know, because I, I would think a code of conduct investigation would be a secondary option, or they would be done concurrently or consecutively, but I think there's a, there's a-
So there's a process for, for requesting that within the code of conduct itself, and before you right now is just a request to pull the cameras?
Okay, yeah, I can support pulling the cameras, for sure. Thank you.
Consensus on that?
No, I, I think if the elect victims have an issue with what occurred, they need to follow, they need to call and make a police report, then as, within their jurisdiction, they would do an investigation. They would pull the video, they would interview the victims, they, that's normally what's done. If something comes out of that, then we can look at it from a council perspective, is my belief, but Chief, if you wanna weigh in on this, it's more than just pulling cameras.
Yeah, and this is turning into a discussion, so it really is just a thumbs up, thumbs down.
I believe we have consensus. Councilmember Perez said he would allow the cameras.
I changed that.
And I did as well.
I changed my, I changed that.
Sure you would, of course you would.
Request to have the city attorney look at a case in Salinas regarding code enforcement hearings and the collection of fines. Look at, in, looking into the formation of a disability advisory committee. Mary, I needed your help, this went back and forth a little bit. Violation of code of conduct, a request for an investigation of the conduct, Vice Mayor, as well as a violation of the rules of order. And then there was also a request for an investigation, and I'm not sure if that's in the code of conduct or not, so that's probably separate, so.
My recommendation would be that we have to follow the code of conduct process to report that violation. So, that wouldn't be something that would be decided up here on the dice, is that not correct, City Attorney?
So my recommendation is that you look at the code of conduct and you follow that with respect to reporting any issues regarding council members. I don't have those rules up in front of me right now. And then with respect to using the council to create videos and election propaganda, I'll just reach out to your elections attorney and get a written opinion on that.
Thank you, I'd appreciate that, especially when videos are being doctored and clipped and to present a certain viewpoint that isn't necessarily what the council was doing, so that's, that's a concern for me.
I'll get it, I'll get an opinion from your elections council on it.
And then we have a request to honor a resident who is turning 101 years old. Thank you.
So I think we're done, then, do you, do you have anything for the city manager to report?
Just I wanna take the time to acknowledge the, the efforts of the Parks and Rec Direct Department this weekend with Charles and Tina putting together with the team the Mexican Independence Day parade slash celebration. I think it was, I had the good fortune of going down and checking it out, and they did a fantastic job, so just wanna highlight that, that they put on a great event in the community, which is, you know, the second year that that's been done, so they had a good attendance and it was a great show.
All right. Any other updates, or any other reports from Chief, or, no? All right. So we have closed session. Do we have any, I guess, city, city attorney, did you wanna read the closed session, or do we do comments first?
Yeah, you asked for comments first.
All right, can we have comments on closed session, please?
There are no public comments.
Okay, could you announce the closed session, then? Thanks.
Yes, item 10.1, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two or three of subdivision D of Section 54956.9 of the Government Code, two cases.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to adjourn then to closed session? Thank you. So we're going to adjourn then to closed session?
That's the- Yeah. Yeah, so it's just an informational-